Sorry to be a little obnoxious, but I don't have my hand up. Welcome everyone to the special meeting of the Blue Lake City Council on this March 14th, 2023 Tuesday. This is a working session. I don't think we have a flag in here. So we are not going to have a flag salute. Would you establish a quorum of the council, please, Amanda?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mayor Protem Scholl?
Present.
Councilmember Edgar?
Here.
Councilmember McKay?
Here.
Councilmember Stavani?
Here.
Do we need a quorum of the planning? I'm interested to see if we have a quorum.
We don't just do it.
Okay, there's only two. Parks and Heritage, we only have two? Two for Parks and Heritage. Parks and Rec, we just have them all leaving.
That's somebody's zoomed in.
Okay, but I think to establish a quorum, they have to be in. Okay. Okay, one more. I don't think we have a quorum of any of the council members. Okay, I'm going to go on to item two then, approval of the agenda. First to the council, if there are any questions, comments, changes, then to the audience. Any questions, comments, or changes? Back to the council for a vote. I move we accept the agenda as written. Second. Motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Elizabeth McKay, to approve the agenda as delivered. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item three, public input. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information for the city council to the city council that is relevant to the scope and authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on our agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public input section. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone from Zoom? I can't see anyone to make an exception. Any chance? Okay, we'll move on then to item four. Roles and obligations of a member of a public legislative body.
Can I take that man?
Yeah, okay. So this is our city attorney, Rick Pla.
Yeah, Rick Ryan.
Hi, I'm Pla.
That's okay. It's nice to meet all of you. I know I've seen some of you before. It's nice to be back in person as well. And so I've got a presentation. It really covers three primary areas. The first is what is the role of the council? What is the role of other subordinate legislative bodies in the city? What's the relationship between the legislative body, whether it be the council, the planning commission, and city staff? So that would be the first section. The next section is going to cover the Brown Act 101. You know, there's a lot of nuances in the Brown Act, but this is going to cover the primary best practices and rules that the Brown Act imposes on all of you that are members of a, of the city council, planning commission, or other commissions or bodies of the city. As part of the Brown Act discussion, we're going to cover kind of the conduct of meetings, how meetings should be run, who's in charge of running meetings. And then lastly, we're going to cover very briefly the California Public Records Act request, really as it pertains to you as members of elected or appointed bodies. And so we'll start with the first item, which is the role of the council within our city government. And Blue Lake has, like most cities in California, adopted what's called a city council manager form of government. This is different from what larger cities like San Francisco and LA have, which is what's called a strong mayor form of government. Under a strong mayor form of government, the chief executive of the city, which is the mayor, is elected, as opposed to the chief executive of a, of a council manager form of government, who's appointed by and serves at the pleasure of the city council. So Manny, if you could go to the next slide. And so under a city manager form of government, the council's main role and responsibility is to set policy direction through collective action in a public meeting. The city manager, on the other hand, is responsible for carrying out the council's policy direction through the day-to-day management of city functions. So in other words, the council sets the what? What is the city going to do? What does the city stand for? What is going to be legal? What is going to be illegal? What are the zoning classifications? What are allowable uses? And the city manager and city staff implement the how, which is how are we going to accomplish the city council's policy directives? Next slide. And so the council, and you know, when I say the council, with the planning commission here as well as some other subordinate bodies, these bodies set direction in a variety of ways, but it's always through one common theme, which is the collective desire of the body as expressed through a majority vote, a supermajority vote, whatever the minimum threshold for the particular action needs to be, that's how the policy is set. Councils don't act individually through members, so individuals of bodies do not set policy. It is the collective desire of the council as expressed through collective action. And so policy direction is provided through ordinances, planning policies such as the general plan and zoning ordinances, financial policies, the annual budget, which is obviously an important one, capital improvement plans, the adoption of council policies, and through program directives. Next slide. And just, just so it's conversational, feel free to jump in with any questions that you may have, whether during the presentation or at the end. Now, the city manager's role, as I mentioned, is the chief executive of the city, responsible for carrying out and implementing the council's policy directives through the day-to-day management of the city. And the city manager's primary day-to-day responsibilities are going to include the hiring and supervision of department heads and employees of the city, the implementation of the annual budget, and the assurance of quality service delivery throughout the city. Next slide. The city manager's role, because we have a city manager, a council manager form of government, is codified in the Blue Lake Municipal Code. And that's in section 2.12.070. The city manager is responsible for all of these things. The primary ones being law enforcement, authority over employees, except those appointed positions, which are the city clerk, the treasurer, and the city attorney, recommendations to the council about ordinances and other policies, preparation and submittal of the proposed budget, and compensation schedules for all employees, expenditure control and purchasing, investigation and complaints, management of public buildings, and other duties as may be delegated by, from time to time, by the council through ordinances, resolutions, or other official actions of the city. Next slide. Thank you. As you might imagine, the, there's a lot of gray area between the what and the how. The city manager often recommends policy to the council through staff recommendations. On the other hand, the city council often has a role in the how, in terms of implementing policy directions through providing direction to staff. And so there is a lot of gray area there, but it's important to understand and respect the primary roles and responsibilities of each of the two primary departments, the city council and the city manager, the planning commission and the planning director, whatever it may be. And so the underlying assumption in the council manager role is that the council, as the direct representatives and elected representatives of the community, are best positioned to set policy. What does our community want? What does our community stand for? They're directly accountable to the elected, to the citizens, and so they should set the policy. And so as the council, that's your primary role and responsibility, is to set policy throughout the city and govern the city through the setting of policies, adoption of ordinances, resolutions. The council manager government is also based on the assumption that the day-to-day handling of the city, in terms of how the things are implemented, is best left to the professional staff that have the experience and training to deliver public services. So the council sets the direction, and then they delegate the implementation to their professional staff that they hired and they appointed, and they entrust to carry out that important function. It's also based on the practical reality that the council is not suited to make operational decisions because it only acts through collective action. You can imagine, there's a variety of decisions that are, come up in the day-to-day operation of a city and collection. Collective action is not feasible or practical in order to respond to the day-to-day challenges. So that's how the council, council manager form of government was really created, and that's why it's the predominant method of government throughout the state of California. Next slide. Now, I talked about the gray area between the policy and the administrative functions, and it's in that gray area where a mutually supportive relationship between the council and the city manager is critical to the city's overall success. Next slide. So the League of California Cities, which many of you may know, is a statewide organization that serves to support cities. They serve to support cities through legislative advocacy, through resources, through training, through news alerts, through policy manuals. And the League of California Cities has some really good resources on this very topic, and I do plan to send not only this PowerPoint, but those resources to all of you after tonight's meeting, so that you can have them at your fingertips. But the league has recommended best practices, especially with respect to the council dealing with city staff. And I just wanted to go through briefly some of these, and I can expand on any questions. The League of California Cities Policy booklet about this does go into a lot more detail, and I think it's very helpful. So the number one best practice for councils is to recognize, and this is directly from the league, that you are now different than before you were elected, and more than you may realize. And what the league means by this is, as a member of the city council, that comes with a certain level of prestige within the community, you speak for the city, and so what you say can be imputed to the city. You speak as part of a collective body, but what you say individually may be imputed as the view of the council, even if it's not accurate. And you also speak and represent all of the city employees, and that's also an important responsibility as the quote-unquote employer of many employees that look to the council as their boss, even though in reality, it's really the city manager that is principally the supervisor of employees. And so it's a realization that what you say, what you do, is looked upon differently by folk, by people in the community, it's imputed to the city, and for employees, will take particular note of things that you have to say. The next one is to understand and respect the city man, the council manager form of government and the delegation of duties. As we talked about, it's really important to set the policy and then entrust your employed staff to implement the policy. We'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. Develop a mutually beneficial working relationship. Appreciate the legitimate differences between community perspective and the professional technical perspective. And this is important, you know, as, as an attorney, you know, oftentimes clients will come to you and ask, you know, can we do this? Can we do that? And the answer is always a lot more complicated than it may seem, because of all the red tape and all the regulations that govern what public entities can do. And so while an idea that the community has may seem easy in, as a general matter, there are technical and legal obligations that make such decisions difficult. One of those difficulties can often be the California Environmental Quality Act, which, you know, projects that seem great cost a lot of money because you've got to go through a long technical process before you can see the project come to fruition. So it's respecting that, you know, sometimes staff is going to push back or say, this is not as easy as it may seem, and just understanding and recognizing that there are technical and professional perspectives with respect to projects, ideas, policy, that may make it more difficult. The next is to provide clear policy direction to your staff, whether that's a planning commission or whether that's a council, giving your staff clear directive as to what your, what your policy directives are is very important. And I would urge all of you, when you get draft resolutions or draft ordinances, to really look at those, to see if they provide the level of direction, both to the community and to your staff and employees, that you're looking for and that you could take and implement. And so I think that's important, because the council does express its policy directives primarily through ordinances, policy, and resolutions. And so taking a hard look at those and considering whether or not your staff has the direction they need to implement or vision is important. And it also gives you the opportunity to try to persuade your fellow council members, your fellow commissioners, that a draft ordinance needs to be changed in a particular way because it doesn't provide the level of direction that you feel is necessary. And so those are opportunities to improve upon what staff may recommend, what you may draft, as something that you'd like your colleagues to adopt as the policy of the city. Next slide. You know, as we continue these league recommendations, the next one is to be sensitive to the need for city managers to sometimes tell you what you don't want to hear. You know, this goes both to bad news, but it also goes back to what we talked about before, that things may not be as easy as they seem. So it's, it's understanding that there may be pushback for what you may believe is a very simple, commonsensical solution. The next is to take your role to evaluate the city manager's performance seriously and to do it constructively. As the council, you don't supervise on a direct basis any employees other than the city manager. And so taking the performance evaluation seriously, however frequently you do it, is both important for you to provide your feedback to the city manager, but also so that the city manager has a chance to understand what your concerns are, where you think there's room for improvement, where you think that the city manager's doing a great job. It provides an opportunity in closed session to really have a good discussion about the role of the city, the direction of the city. If you have any concerns about staff, this is really your opportunity in front of your colleagues and with the city manager to have constructive dialogue about your chief executive, which is the employee that you directly supervise. Everybody else within the city is supervised by the city manager, and the city manager will have those performance evaluations with subordinate employees, but this is your opportunity to really talk frankly and candidly with your chief executive. The next is tolerance for organizational imperfection. Mistakes will be made, right? And it's dealing with mistakes in a constructive manner, whether that's mistakes by a subordinate employee, a mistake by the planning director, a mistake by a city manager. It's understanding that in a large organization with a lot of moving parts, there will be mistakes. Mistakes are common, and it's dealing with those mistakes appropriately through constructive dialogue, not airing those grievances out publicly, and trying to focus on solutions to mistakes instead of blame. Because ultimately, those types of relationships degrade the relationship between the council member and the city manager, and also have a, they have a trickle-down effect throughout the entire organization when the head of the government, the city council, is publicly critical of mistakes. Next is to try to focus feedback on surface, not individuals. Again, this is, these are all directly from the league's best practices, and this, you know, goes with the one before, which is, you know, as a city council, as the head of the government, you're often seen as the employer of the individuals that work for you, whether that's directly in the case of the city manager, or indirect in the case of all other city employees. And when you're critical of individuals, it's not a good look for the organization. It's not good for the employee that's the subject of the criticism, but it's perfectly okay to criticize or to talk about the delivery of services. That is your role. And so that's okay, but again, we want to focus on the quality of the service, not any particular individual. The next is don't expect managers to take sides in council member disputes. That's pretty self-explanatory, but often I see, in, in my experience, that council members will try to convince the city manager to take up the mantle for their position. And we just need to understand that's not the role of the city manager. And it doesn't work well. It may work well for that one thing, for your particular position, but it's, as a systemic problem, it's, it's not a good thing for, for the council to encourage or try to persuade the city manager to take up a particular position. Next is don't jump to conclusions regarding citizen customer feedback. Oftentimes, as members of the city council, you'll get contacted by a constituent that says, you know, hey, there's an issue with the park, or, you know, my neighbor's doing X, Y, and Z, or, you know, city manager did this, whatever it may be. It's important not to jump to conclusions, to always believe the constituent. The best thing to do is to refer the matter to staff to investigate, because there's often two sides to every story, and when you jump again and blame your city staff, your employees, it has a negative effect on morale in the organization, and it's not good conflict resolution, right? You want to hear both sides of the story before you form your conclusions. Next is develop a clear understanding with the city manager of the type of frequency of communication you prefer. As we get down, you know, the city manager is your point of contact or matters within the city. Some council members, some planning commission members, some members of, of other boards, they want constant communication with the city manager on an almost daily basis. What's going on? How are things going? And, and some attend meetings, and that's about it. You know, it, it really depends on the level of involvement that each of you desire, and there's no right or wrong way to go about it. But it's helpful to have a discussion with the city manager as to where you fall on that spectrum. You know, do you want a weekly meeting where you can sit down with the city manager and, and find out what's going on? You want a monthly meeting? You know, I'd say be respectful of the city manager's time, because Manny's got a lot going on, but you should set and, and let Manny know the level of information and involvement you'd like to know and on what frequency. But that comes into the next two, which is to understand and respect that managers can't always do what you want them to do, and avoid giving individual directions to the city manager. As it, you know, as we talked about, councils set policy on a collective basis. No individual on any board, council, commission, can direct the city manager to do anything within the city. You can't call up any staff and direct staff to do anything, because that is not the collective desire of the council. That is one individual's directive. And the city manager or whatever staff may feel, may feel compelled, because the mayor may call, or a council member may call and say, hey Manny, I need you to do this. But the appropriate answer is, I'm sorry, I can't do that unless the full council directs it. If you'd like me to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, I'm happy to do so. I just wanted to read directly from the league's guidance on this, and it states, "Individual members of this council should not expect the city manager to implement their ideas unless a majority of the council gives such direction." The city manager's role is to carry out council policy as established on a given issue by a majority of its members. A council member who is in the majority, minority, excuse me, on some issue should endeavor to change his or her colleague's position, rather than expect the city manager to marshal the organization's resources in support of a policy's decision that differs from the direction set by the council majority. And you'll see this theme often through policy book, publications about the role between the city council and the city manager. I think it's important to respect that as a city manager and as staff, you essentially have five bosses. And the only way those five bosses can give legitimate direction is for three of them to agree. But when one calls, even if, you know, it, that one may represent the opinions of two others, until the council directs such action in a notice public meeting, it's not a directive to your city manager. And recognizing that and trying not to put the city manager or subordinate-level employees in the position of having to say no to one of their five bosses is always a good thing that helps to build trust and a good working relationship between the council and staff. Next slide. And so I just want to point out that this theme of not providing direction to, to staff is actually codified in the Blue Lake Municipal Code and is often codified in most codes. And the Blue Lake Code states that "The city council and its members shall deal with the administrative services of the city only through the city manager, except for purpose of inquiry, and neither the city council nor any member thereof shall give orders or instructions to any subordinates of the city manager. The city manager shall take orders and instructions from the city council only when sitting in a duly convened meeting of the city council, and no individual council member shall give any orders or instructions to the city manager." And so you can see, that is a theme that has become, through a lot of trial and error, very important to cities, recognizing what creates good governance and what creates an efficient delivery of services. And so keeping that in mind, as you meet with the city manager and discuss kind of the, the challenges, the daily operational, what's going on within the city, which is perfectly okay, it's important to remember that it's an informational session, not a session to try to direct your chief executive to take a particular course of action or do something, or investigate this, or investigate that. So just keep that in mind, and I think that'll be helpful as we move forward. Next slide. So at this point, I've kind of covered the structural role of the council and the city manager and staff. Are there any questions with respect to that that we want to talk about before we move on to the Brown Act?
You've mentioned a couple of times, and this will probably get into the Brown Act, where we should try to convince our colleagues of our, of our viewpoint, but I'm, you'll get into this more, but very clearly, you do that at the city council meeting. You don't go calling up council members because that's considered a serial meeting, or you don't, you know, any two or more, if you're at a party or something, you can't really be discussing these things, trying to get people to see things your way. You're going to get into that more. But when you said that, or you said that a couple of times, and it just set off some red flags for me that, you know, you've got to be really clear what situation you're in to be able to try to convince your colleagues of your point of view.
Yeah, I agree.
You've got to be in the public.
And we will get into that. Yep, with some limited exceptions for closed sessions.
Right, that's true. And you did mention the evaluation process, which is in closed session. You're the city manager, and then, you know, we're, we're able to talk about the pluses and minuses and, and other. the pluses and minuses and, and other pertinent facts. And then if it's a lawsuit against the city, that's the other way we can go in a closed session.
Yeah, we'll get into that.
Yeah, I know you love that.
I was curious about the municipal code. I know that was developed in recent years, I believe. And so I'm wondering, was our municipal code specifically tailored to Blue Lake? Or was this kind of a generic municipal code that was adopted?
It's a good question. So the codification of the municipal code was essentially a combination of all of our existing ordinances that existed at the time and then merged into a code. And so if it wasn't on, if it wasn't our ordinance before, it didn't make it into the code. And so it wasn't, you know, a form municipal code that was created, you know, using a template from another city. These are our ordinances that were put into a code. Now, I will say, there are some aspects of the code that are common throughout both cities. And, and there are some common threads, especially in the administration, the general provisions. But the substantive provisions were our ordinances that were on the books at the time.
What I think of ordinances, I think of building ordinances, the safety ordinances and traffic and this and that.
I never, I never considered ordinances, that concept as a way of running a city. So I guess that you were kind of, maybe that's the administrative portion?
So an ordinance is, is an expression of law. So whatever the law is that the council adopts, that they want to enforce, is only done through ordinance. A resolution, on the other hand, is a bit, it's not creation of law, but it's approval of transactional matters. It's statements of policy that aren't law. It's a whole host of things. There's ceremonial resolutions. But if the council's adopting an ordinance, that means it's adopting a legally binding obligation that the city can enforce upon whomever the subjects, whoever the class of persons or businesses or buildings or parcels that fall within the parameters of the ordinance.
So, so all of the administrative stuff is policy?
In the code?
Right.
Those are ordinances. Those are laws of the city. And, and they're legally binding upon the administration. Any other questions on, on that part? Okay. So next, we'll talk about the Brown Act. And as we, as, as most of you probably know, the Brown Act is California's open meeting law. And, there you go. And so you'll see the original purpose of the law, which, when it was adopted in 1953, was to ensure that the community, the citizens have a place on the council's agenda. Right? And they are able to see the deliberations of the bodies that set law and policy for their community. And so this is the original legislative purpose that's within the Brown Act. This is what, you know, our legislature and the governor decided to be the intent of adopting an open meeting law. Go to the next slide. In 2004, through Prop 59, there was another statement of strong public policy that the conduct of the people's business should be open to public scrutiny. And so you could see there's a very strong theme throughout both the Brown Act and subsequent constitutional amendments that the people's business should be conducted openly and transparently. Next slide. Thank you. So the general principles of the Brown Act. All meetings shall be open to the public. Actions and deliberations must be taken openly. All people, should say persons, all persons shall be permitted to attend and participate in the meetings. And only matters on the agenda can be discussed and acted upon. And as I noted at the bottom, there are very narrow exceptions to these general principles. And we'll go through most of those exceptions as we move forward. Next slide. So within the Brown Act, the definition of a meeting is extremely important. And so you'll see I've essentially copied and pasted the statutory definition of meeting, which is any congregation of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and location, including teleconference locations, to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item that is within the subject matter of the legislative body. Deliberation includes collective decision-making and collective acquisition and exchange of facts preliminary to the ultimate decision. And so, you know, that, that last part, facts preliminary to the ultimate decision is important because it's not just the ultimate decision that needs to be conducted openly and in a public meeting. It's the deliberation, the facts that underlie the action. It's, you know, the council and boards are not permitted to have a private discussion about, you know, the details of a particular proposal and then vote on the proposal openly without much discussion. The public's entitled to know how you're thinking and why you're voting. And that's why deliberation, the definition of the meeting are very broad. You'll see that, that there's also a definition for action taken, and which is a collective decision or an actual vote by a majority of the members. It doesn't necessarily have to be a resolution or ordinance or some document that's being approved. If there is a collective direction by the council, that is considered taking action on an item. And that needs to be done openly and in a public meeting. And you'll see at the bottom, meeting includes a majority of the members of the legislative body. And so two of you are more than welcome to go out to lunch, right? And, and discuss city business. But as, once there's a third person that shows up to the restaurant, sits down at the table, that means a meeting. And that would constitute a Brown Act violation if anything within the subject matter of the city is discussed at that lunch. So again, feel free to jump in if there's any questions as we go through the slides. Next slide. Under the Brown Act, there are a number of types of meetings. Regular meeting is probably the one you're most familiar with. That's your regular council meeting that's set each month that you have a regularly scheduled time. Special meetings are meetings that may come up from time to time that aren't regularly scheduled. Regular meetings require 72 hours notice, agenda posting. Special meetings require 24 hour notice and agenda postings. The Brown Act does permit emergency meetings, which are meetings held on short notice when prompt action is needed due to actual or threatened disruption of public facilities. Very narrow allowance for emergency meetings. You've got to have an hour's notice to all news media. And there are some special notice requirements and limitations that apply to emergency meetings. But they are rare, but they are allowed if circumstances require. There's also adjourned meetings, which are regular or special meetings that have been adjourned or re-adjourned to a time and place specified in the order of adjournment. And for adjourned meetings, there is no agenda required for adjourned meetings for less than five calendar days. If, if a meeting is adjourned for less than five calendar days, as long as no additional business that wasn't on the original agenda is transacted. Adjourned meetings are very rare. I think in Blue Lake, we've used them from time to time for certain public hearings, for ordinance adoption, to have an introduction and a second reading occur more closely than, you know, at, at, at a regular meeting separated by an entire month. But they do happen and they are allowed from time to time. There are informal meetings, which is an informal gathering of a majority of the members at which local agency business is discussed or transacted. That would be a workshop, a special study session. Generally, those are thought of as just special meetings, but they are more informal in nature. And so those are permitted.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
I've read something about special meetings that can be called by the chairman of the council or a majority of the council. So my question is, how did the majority of the council discuss an issue that's called a special meeting without violating the Brown Act?
Yeah, it's a good question. So in terms of calling meetings, that's generally left to city policy. But the mayor, the city manager, or a majority of the members can call a special meeting. With the majority of the members, which I think you're getting at, oftentimes that's done at a regular meeting, saying, we have an issue that's coming up. We need to vote as to whether we're going to hold a special meeting. The other way to do it would be a one-way communication from a council member to the city manager saying, I think we need a special meeting. And if the city manager has three of those emails, then a special meeting could be called. But generally speaking, it's going to be at an open public meeting, in which case the council votes to hold a special meeting on a particular date and time to discuss something that needs to be discussed before the next regular meeting.
Okay, so how are three people going to individually tell the city manager that they want a special meeting if they haven't communicated with each other?
See, that's the part you can't do. You can't communicate with each other. But if three council members are thinking the same thing and they all email the city manager saying, hey, I think we need to have a special meeting, then that could, that could give direction to the city manager. But the most often occurrence is going to be at a regular meeting, three council members saying, we need to hold a special meeting.
Informal meetings, do they need to have agendas and announcements?
They need to be noticed. And generally, the notice is through an agenda posting. And so it could say, special workshop at the city council. Time, place. And that's, that's all it needs to say.
There's a timeline on that too. 24, 48, 70.
It, it'd still be 24. Unless it qualifies as an emergency meeting, it'd still be 24.
Are, there are 72-hour requirements for posting agendas for committees?
Yes. Every regular meeting of any legislative body. And legislative body is broadly defined. So it'd be your planning commission. It'd be any standing committees or commissions of the council. Parks and Rec Committee. All of those, every regular meeting requires 72-hour posting of the agenda. 24 for special meetings. And I, I'd say, there really is no council-specific provisions in the Brown Act. If you're a legislative body, the rules are the same. Teleconference meetings. Before COVID, if you remember back that far, teleconference meetings were very rare. Under the Brown Act, they were permitted, but a majority of the council had to teleconference from within the city. And every teleconference location had to be open and accessible to the public. And agenda had to be posted at every teleconference location. So if you were zooming in from your house pre-COVID, your living room needed to be open to the public to provide public comment. It had to be accessible. There was a lot of restrictions that made teleconference meetings simply not practical. That's right. Posted on the telephone. And so with COVID and the need to socially distance, the legislature, the governor first through executive order, but ultimately the legislature gave some important relief to what are otherwise stringent and impractical teleconferencing. The first one came through AB 361, which, as the council will remember, was largely the legislation that allowed Zoom exclusively for a long period of time. As I, as I have on the slide, it allowed the full council to participate remotely if the meeting was held during a proclaimed state of emergency by the governor and state or local officials imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing. Or the meeting was held during a proclaimed state of emergency and the council made findings at the start of the meeting that meeting in person would present imminent risks to health and safety of attendees. So with the state of emergency, the COVID state of emergency having now been rescinded, AB 361 is not an available option to councils, boards, commissions, any one. Which means we're back to in-person. Except, if you've got that slide, Andy. The legislature did realize that Zoom platform and teleconference meetings were beneficial. Did allow for more participation by both members of the body and by the public. And so they did adopt recently, which came into effect this past January, AB 2449. And this law allows less than a quorum of the legislative body to participate in the public meeting via teleconference, subject to the requirements you see there. So again, it allows two of you to zoom in or teleconference in as long as the remaining three of you are in a open, public, in-person meeting at which the public can participate. There are some restrictions on reasons why one or two, up to two, could teleconference in. And those are either just cause, as defined into the statute, or emergency circumstances. And under either of those, if a member of a body attends remotely, the public must also be permitted to attend in-person or remotely. And so it does recognize that from time to time, a council member may be ill or may have another reason that constitutes.
A disability.
Correct. And so there are circumstances when, you know, a member can participate remotely. There are restrictions though. You can only use it twice in a year. And the council needs to essentially approve the justification for attending remotely. And I've got a memo on AB 2449 that I'll send with the materials that I provide after so that you can see it in more detail. It is restrictive still, but it does provide some relief from, you know, having to post an agenda on your door and open up your living room if you're not feeling well. Next slide. Oh, thank you. So there are some exceptions to the definition of a meeting. And so, you know, I'm going to go through each of these. These are probably the most common. And these are the ones that are recognized in the Brown Act. So individual contacts with any non-legislative body member. Some council members, some members of the commissions are under the mistaken impression that they can't speak to the community about matters within the city. And that's not true. You can certainly meet with constituents. You can meet with the city manager. You can really have a, a discussion about anything as long as it's two or less. The next would be conferences attended by a majority of the legislative body. And again, this is where a majority of the legislative body is in-person together. And this exception permits the legislative body members to attend annual association conferences of city county school, community college, or other local agency officials. Here's the rub, so long as those meetings are open to the public. So going to a private conference where somebody has to pay to get in, three of you can't attend. If it's a, you know, all of you could go to a board supervisor's meeting. Attendance at community meetings. This is similar. This exception allows a legislative body majority to attend an open and publicized meeting held by another organization to address a topic of local community concern. It could be a board supervisor's meeting. It could be a Blue Lake Fire meeting. It could be a nonprofit meeting. As long as the meeting itself is publicized. The Brown Act doesn't really define publicized and open to anybody who'd like to attend.
So if two of us or three of us are on a community group that meets and has lunch once a month, that is a violation because it's not, that particular lunch is not an open invitation. Anybody wants to show up?
Well, if three of you meet for lunch and there is discussion about anything within the city's purview, that would be a meeting under the Brown Act and would not be permitted unless the, the, the meeting is. unless the meeting is open and publicized.
If we're all getting together and having lunch and planning the next plant sale or something, that's okay.
That's okay. That's okay. The next one, attendance at meetings held by other legislative bodies, board supervisor's meeting, those are all open and held in accordance with the Brown Act, so no problem there. Attendance at standing committee meetings as an observer. And so this section authorizes the attendance of a majority of a board at an open and notice meeting of a standing committee of the council, provided that the legislative body members who are not members of the standing committee attend only as observers, meaning they cannot speak or otherwise participate in the meeting. And so, you know, this is something that often comes up, because council members like to attend planning commission meetings. And it's important to recognize that attending as a council member, if two more of your colleagues are present, again, we're talking about a majority, you're there only as an observer, and you shouldn't try to participate in the meeting to try to sway a subordinate body of your body to take any particular action. Because oftentimes, planning commission decisions, especially if they're adjudicatory in nature, will come to the council for a decision. And so it's best to allow the process to play out, you can attend, you can observe, but not participate. And just so we're clear, on the standing committee, under the Brown Act, the Brown Act applies to any standing committee or commission of the council. And so those would be things that are created through ordinance or other official policy. So those would be your planning commission, your Parks and Rec, any other committee that is permanent in nature. Those are all considered legislative bodies, and the Brown Act applies with equal force to each of them. Brown Act does not apply to ad hoc committees, which are temporary committees that are created for a special purpose and then they dissolve. Again, so long as the ad hoc committee does not constitute a majority of the council or whatever committee, ad hoc committee is of the planning commission or other committees. Yeah?
So if there is a commission that has nine members, an ad hoc...
Could be four.
Yeah, could have four.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, to clarify the whole, so if two of us show up at a planning commission meeting, we can participate and discuss, but if three of us show up, we can't?
Correct. And there's a couple of reasons why. Because there's a majority there, two of your colleagues are going to hear your position before you're in a meeting for the council. And so it borders the line of deliberation, because your colleagues are hearing your position. But also, this is a matter of best practice, you don't want to try to influence or sway a subordinate body to make a particular decision, because, you know, you're there, it's a member of the city council that appoints them.
Right.
And you don't want to speak on some, especially if it's an adjudicatory decision, you know, there's an appeal of denial of a permit, let's say. You don't want to let your personal belief be known, because the matter may likely come to you for a final decision.
So I guess, does that also apply for, like, the council liaison that goes to each of these commission meetings?
That's different. They're on the committee itself and are supposed to participate and report back to the council. You know, sometimes liaisons are appointed as non-voting members of committees, sometimes they're voting members, but they're able to fully participate. And it's generally advisory bodies that don't have delegated authority to take any particular action or adopt, you know, any rules or policies that would bind anybody else.
So how, in our city, which of our commissions are which? Like, the planning commission is not an advisory?
No.
But everybody else maybe is? Is that right? Okay.
Well, we don't have a liaison to the planning commission.
Correct. Yeah, we don't.
But we have a liaison to the arts and heritage commission, for instance. They're not, but that liaison is not a voting member. Now, I'm a liaison to the Humble County Association of Governments. I'm a voting member.
That's different.
Yes.
Yeah.
And we have liaisons to REDEC, economic development.
Development Corporation.
And that person, I believe, is also a voting member.
And so in this context, I'm talking about you as council members attending a subordinate commission or committee of the council.
Right.
And so REDEC would be something called a separate entity. And so they're subject to their own Brown Act requirements for REDEC, for example, or LAPCA, whatever it may be. And so just to finish off the list, social or purely ceremonial events are an exception to the meeting definition, again, so long as there's no deliberation, discussion on things within the council's purview. And Brown Act also does permit a majority to attend and provide grand jury testimony, and we're all hoping that that ever becomes necessary.
But when it did become necessary, and I was on the council when this happened, we went in individually and spoke to the grand jury. We did not speak as a body.
And that's different. But that would be controlled by the grand jury.
Grand jury was the one that said.
So we can all go to bingo, as long as we don't?
Correct. Absolutely.
And the refreshment area and discuss council.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's the Brown Act in a nutshell, right there.
Yes.
So now we'll get into what are called serial meetings, and this is, again, something that's codified in the Brown Act. And that prohibits a majority of members of a legislative body from using a series of communications of any kind, directly or through intermediaries outside of the meeting, to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Right? It's...
Facebook.
Well, you know, that's a, the primary one is email, and text, and phone calls. And we'll get into the methods by which serial meetings often occur. And, you know, they're typically thought of in either the daisy chain method or the hub-and-spoke method. The daisy chain is just what it sounds like. A contacts B, B contacts C, C contacts D, so on and so forth, until all the members of the city council have been involved in a discussion outside of a public meeting. It's a serial meeting, it's a Brown Act violation, it can't occur. The hub-and-spoke method is where one person acts as a hub, for example, staff member or the city manager, or a council member, and communicates with members of the legislative body, which are the spokes, on a one-on-one basis until they've gotten to three or more. And so it's one council member calling up three of you individually, or emailing three of you individually, and saying, hey, I think we should do this, or what do you think about this, or I plan to vote this way. That's a hub-and-spoke method of serial meetings, not permitted under the Brown Act, constitutes a Brown Act violation. So we'll get into this in more detail. So, these are things that, yeah, go ahead.
You mentioned the city manager in this?
Yeah.
So if I speak to the city manager about something, and then somebody else speaks to the city manager about something, and somebody else speaks to the city manager?
No, this would be you communicating with the city manager, and then the city manager communicating your beliefs to two or more of your colleagues.
Okay.
So essentially, your position is being relayed through the city manager to each of the spokes.
Okay.
Yeah. And so as you'll see here, if you go to the next slide, Andy, there are some communications that don't constitute a serial meeting. And that, the primary one is a unilateral written communication to the legislative body, such as an informational or advisory memorandum. And so, so, yeah, this is the reply-all problem, right?
Oh, right. Yeah.
So the city manager emails and says, hey, council, hey, planning commission, we're planning to hold a special meeting, and this is what we're going to discuss. That's okay. Or it could be Mandy saying, there was an incident in the city today, this is what occurred, this is how we responded. That's fine. The problem becomes when somebody hits reply-all and says something simply as, I agree, or good job. Technically, it's a Brown Act violation, it's a serial meeting. And so what I've always recommended is that when sending unilateral communications, all council members, all members of a body, be put in the BCC line on an email, so that if you do hit reply-all accidentally, it only goes back to the sender. But those are the types of counterintuitive, you know, technical violations that sometimes get cities in trouble. And it could be as innocent as, I agree, or good job, or whatever it may be. But you can imagine, it can be egregious in certain situations. So it's best to watch out for the reply-all. Obviously, you can't email all your colleagues, you can't email three of your colleagues, even if it's one by one by one by one. And the purpose of the Brown Act is that your deliberations, your discussions, your arguments, your positions, your thinking, is all going to be done in public at an open You know, as we mentioned earlier, individual meetings with staff in preparation for a meeting is perfectly okay. And you'll see here that I have to note that staff should be careful not to disclose to other members the content of meetings with or positions of any other member. So, you know, Andy can't say to two other, hey, I met with the mayor, and she believes this. Perfect. You know, that would be a serial meeting, and that can't be done. So it's something to watch out for. There's always a lot of size when everybody talks about serial meetings, because it is counterproductive to the efficient administration and planning and coming to recommendations, but it is the law, and you have to follow it. Thank you. So I won't go through all this, but these are the agenda requirements for meetings. You'll see seventy-two hours for regular meetings, twenty-four hours for special meetings. Brown Act requires that it be posted in a location that's freely accessible to members of the public, it be posted on the agency's website, it be mailed to anybody who requests that, agendas be mailed to them. Special meeting agendas have to be delivered to the media, whoever requested notice, at least twenty-four hours in advance. You'll see emergency meetings. The big one is that it contain a brief and general description of each item of business to be transacted or discussed at the meeting. And then, as we all know, the public has multiple places on the agenda. For every regular meeting, they have to have a general public comment session, where any member of the public can bring and speak to the council on anything within the council's or the commission or other body's jurisdiction. And then also, during the discussion of any agendized item, the council has to be provided an opportunity to address the council, and the board, or the commission, before action is taken. Next slide. So as a general rule, the legislative body may not take action on any item not properly and timely placed on the agenda. That includes both action and discussion of action. That's why a lot of times, having an agenda item that just says future agenda items is a good thing, because it does allow the council, or the board, or the commission to discuss things they may want to see on future agenda items. And so, but the important thing is, action cannot be taken on anything that's not properly agendized in accordance with the Brown Act. Of course, there are some exceptions. There are, there's the emergency situation and urgency exception. And so, under the emergency situation, which is very narrowly defined, the council can decide to take action on an emergency situation. That would be something that is immediate, and is, action is necessary to protect public There's the urgency exception, which is where two-thirds of the members present determine there is a need for immediate action, and the need to take action came to the attention of the staff or the city after the agenda was posted. So either within that seventy-two-hour window for regular meetings, or twenty-four-hour window for special meetings, something came up, an immediate action is necessary, the council, board, commission can add something to the agenda by a two-thirds vote after seeing clearly the basis for the urgency. And once that's done, the item is placed on the agenda just as it would have been if it had been placed prior to posting. Yeah?
So is this, this would happen in the meeting?
Correct.
Because that would two-thirds, okay.
In the meeting.
Yes.
Usually it happens, you know, at the beginning, in the agenda, something may come up, and you have to make a ruling that the need for this, to get on the agenda, happened since the posting of the agenda, and that is urgency.
Correct.
And you have to vote on that.
Yeah. Yeah, it would happen at the outset, or, you know, typically, it'd be brought to your attention by city staff, saying, something's come up, it's, you know, we need to take action tonight, and so I'm going to ask for you to add an agenda item, two-thirds vote, explain the reasons for it, council member through motion will move to add it to the agenda second, and then you'll vote on it, and then it'll be placed on the agenda just as if it was originally.
Usually it's something time-sensitive, like, you know, the deadline would be before our next meeting, something like that, we have to get a grant in, that's by a certain amount of time, or something like that, it's usually...
The grant is the most common one, you know, oftentimes, you know, a grant will come to the agency's attention, and Andy can speak to it. Sometimes we find it, or we discover it, and there's not that many days left until resolution of the council needs to be adopted in order to get the grant application in on time. So those are the types of situations where the urgency agenda exception can be utilized. The final exception is when an item appeared on the agenda of and was continued from a meeting held not more than five days earlier. Again, this is the adjourned meeting exception that I talked about earlier, where if the council adjourns a regular meeting to five nights of meeting, the agenda for the original meeting carries over as the agenda for the adjourned meeting. Next slide. Oh, thank you. As we talked about, the public has a place on every agenda, and the, I'll go down to the second bullet point, which is the members of the public cannot be required to register their names, provide other information, complete a questionnaire, or otherwise fulfill any condition to attending a meeting. Oftentimes, mayors, chairpersons will ask the person to state their name, where, state your name and address. Public can, but they don't have to. And you can't condition their being able to speak on providing a name, providing an address, whatever, signing in a book, whatever it may be. They can come and speak, and don't have to give their name, address, anything else. The public has a right to record meetings, whether through audio or audio visual. And any non-privileged materials that are distributed to members of the legislative body before or during a meeting must also be made available to the public at the same time as distribution to the legislative body. Agenda packet's a big one, right? That's why the agenda packets are posted to the website, because that is the material that accompanies the agenda. If there's a supplemental packet item that's emailed to the council, it also needs to go to the website at the same time. You know, in other words, the council should not be given information that the public doesn't have access to in advance of the meeting. Next slide. I won't go through this, because we talked about it, but there is the general public comment. Again, that's required for regular meetings, it's not required for special meetings, but it's generally provided in special meetings as well, just like we did tonight. And this is, again, the general public comment on anything that's not on the agenda. Every agendized item, the public must be able to speak. And the council may adopt reasonable regulations to regulate public comment, but again, really, that's limited to time. that's limited to timelines on public comments, and the rules should be enforced by the mayor or the chairperson in a fair manner without expecting the point of view of the speaker. Next slide. So during public meetings, often and unbeknownst to members of the public, it's not a Q and A session. It's not a, it's not an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of the council. It is an opportunity for members of the public to state their view, and that's it. And so, members of the legislative body should not engage with members of the public during the public comment period. And this is especially true with regard to items that do not appear on the agenda. Again, because items that don't appear on the agenda, there won't be council discussion on it because it's not agendized. And so, you know, best practice, when somebody asks something, it's best practice to say, you know, "At this point, we don't respond to comments. We can have the city manager get back to you or follow up with you after the meeting or later in the week." And so, it's best not to answer questions because, again, if one council member answers a question, it may not be the answer that the rest of the council would give. And so, again, with the understanding that the council only provides answers and takes action through collective action, addressing questions is not appropriate. Those should be referred to staff. And as you'll see, that second bullet point, you know, members of the legislative body may provide a reference to staff or other resource for factual information or direct staff to place the issue on a future agenda. But answering questions in response to questions posed by the public is not appropriate. The Brown Act does provide for provisions to prevent disruption. And so, the legislative body may remove someone from a meeting who willfully interrupts proceedings. Removal is justified only when audience members actually disrupt proceedings. And if order cannot be restored after removing the disruptive persons, the meeting room may be cleared, except that members of the news media who did not participate in disturbance must be allowed to continue to attend. It's a very rare occurrence that's ever needed, but it is something that the Brown Act does allow, the removal of persons who are actually disrupting the meeting. And actual disruptions may come in a variety of ways. I mean, it may be constant and repeated, you know, yelling of comments outside of public comment session. You know, it may be a protest that prevents the council from taking any action, whatever it may be. If it's actually disrupting the proceedings, you do have the ability to direct that person to be removed. If the person is not removed, the meeting should be, the meeting should be paused, and the sheriff's office should be contacted to enforce the rules of the chair. And that leads me to one other thing. It's not necessarily a disruption, but it is something that's related, which is public comment. Everybody gets one opportunity to speak on each item. There really is no ability for somebody to come up to the podium a second time on the same item, whether that's a general public comment or whether that's on an action item. Once you've had your two, three, four, whatever, how many minutes to speak, there is no coming back to the podium. And that's not something that the Brown Act requires, but that's a best practice that I think is useful because once you allow one person to come back to the podium to reengage with the council, there's no justification for not allowing everybody, which is to come back for a second time, to come back. And then, why not a third time? Why not a fourth time? And then, all of a sudden, it devolves into a situation where the council can't deliberate and take action themselves. And so, you know, once a person has had an opportunity to speak, if their hand's back up, you know, "I'm sorry, you've already had your chance to speak. The matter's now back with the council. Public comment's over." And that's both to keep order, to keep things moving, and to also allow the council to hear everybody's viewpoint and then deliberate.
Question?
Yeah.
So pretty much what you're saying is we shouldn't directly address the public anyway in the public the same way the public should directly address.
They can ask all the questions they want.
I'm not talking about that, but personally type of thing?
Yeah.
They can ask the council?
Yeah. Yeah. And so, you know, during a meeting, if a public member asks questions of the council, the mayor's response should be, "I'm sorry, we don't answer questions. We'll have the city manager get back to you." But if a constituent calls you and wants to have a meeting, you're more than welcome to meet with that person.
I was just talking about meetings.
Yeah, yeah.
No one wants to talk.
Now, if the public brings up a number of questions about a topic that they're deliberating and discussing, we can certainly incorporate their questions into our deliberations.
Absolutely. When the matter comes back to the council, whatever questions you have for staff, ask away. And if the, if the public asks a question that you think is pertinent, it's certainly within your prerogative to ask staff to address the question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I kind of keep wanting to circle back to the informal meeting.
Yeah.
So if there's something going on in town, a big project, something new and exciting happening, and a lot of people want to talk about it and hear about it and ask questions, is it an informal meeting a place to do that? Or how can we, how can we have a discussion with, with the public where we are able to go back and forth and have a conversation?
You can do that whenever you want. You know, if somebody calls you and says, "Hey, what's going on with, you know, so-and-so," you're not prevented from answering questions.
Individually.
Individually, yeah.
Sure. But if, you know, if we, you know, if four or five people want to have a conversation, and I don't want to have four or five different conversations, and I sit down with all those people and have a conversation, or can?
Yes.
You know, you know, one of the types of meetings is an informal meeting. So maybe, maybe you could talk a little bit more about how we could.
Yes. So inform, so if it's you talking to the community group, that's fine because there's not a majority of the council present. So it's not a meeting that is within the purview of the Brown Act to begin with. If three of you wanted to have an informal meeting, you could do that as long as it's open and publicized, and anybody who wants to attend can attend.
Okay. Or maybe all five of us want to have a meeting about general topic? I don't know what.
Yeah, then it'd be a workshop or a study session that would be agendized as a 24 hours, and it would be open to the public.
And does somebody have to take minutes at a meeting like that?
An informal meeting, no. Minutes aren't required because you're not, there's no agendized action that's being taken, so you don't need to establish quorum. You don't need minutes because you're not taking action. If you're going to take action, then it needs to be done as an agenda item at a special or regular meeting. But informational meetings, informal meetings are perfectly okay, as long as they're noticed and open to the public.
But not maybe if that same topic is going to be a matter of action at your next regular meeting?
Correct.
Yeah, and I think one thing that has been brought up in the community is there's a community member that would like to have a meeting of the council two or three days before a council meeting to talk about what's going to be done at the meeting.
That would have been enough.
That is completely inappropriate. Okay, but that was suggested.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's been taken down, but that was suggested on Facebook in the last couple of days. Why can't the council meet with us prior to a council meeting to talk about these issues before the meeting?
A member of the public could ask each of you to meet individually in advance of a council meeting to share his or her thoughts.
Yeah.
Anything, that's perfectly okay.
People have emailed me, people call me. That's not a problem.
But to convene all of the council together.
Right.
Requires staff because notice of the meeting has to go out. It requires a publicly accessible facility, and it's usually not something that can be done.
How does it make sense to have a meeting for a meeting?
Well, that's, you know.
It was brought up. It was, it was posted. I don't know if that person took it down or not, but that was just a recent suggestion made.
Well, oftentimes, you know, members of the public don't understand or fully appreciate the limitations that the Brown Act places upon the council and sometimes Herculean effort that it takes to get all five of you in the same room in a legally compliant way. And so, you know, it's, I can understand why, you know, a member of the public would want to have that opportunity, but it's not something that we can likely do or practically in advance of the meeting.
So if a constituent met with each of us individually and shared what each of us said, isn't that a violation?
If, yes. It very well could be. The difference is, is that the person who's conveying the message is not subject to the Brown Act, like staff or other council members would be. So, you know, it's, it's, it would, I should rephrase. It would not be a serial meeting if you met with a member of the public, and if the member of the public met with the rest before you and says, "This council member plans to do this or believes this." Everybody else is learning your position, but because that, the hub is not subject to the Brown Act, they're free to communicate whatever they wish.
Okay.
But staff couldn't do it, you couldn't do it because you are subject to the Brown Act.
Okay.
It's, it's counterintuitive. It's, it's difficult at times to comply with, but it is what it is. Anything else on that? Next slide. So closed sessions are agendized items that allows the council to meet either the five of you or the commission, the, everybody together outside the view of the public, or to meet with staff or agency council. Closed sessions are narrowly construed, and they're all enumerated in the Brown Act as to what is a proper subject of a closed session. They have to be agendized properly before they can possibly occur. And only items that are permissible closed session topics may be discussed in closed session. Discussion of an item in closed session that isn't a proper subject for a closed session meeting is considered an unlawful meeting and a Brown Act violation. Attendance at closed sessions is limited to persons necessary to the issue under discussion. And certain closed session items require public action be taken immediately before adjourning into closed session, and, and certain actions in closed session require a public report of the action taken. And so, just to step back, there are two primary areas where a public action needs to be taken prior to the journey into closed session, and they both concern appointment of negotiators. So closed session items can be conference with labor negotiators, conference, or conference with real property negotiators. And the first time you want to close session to discuss one of those topics, you have to publicly appoint and announce who is the negotiator on behalf of the city. So that's a public agenda item that's done before adjourning into closed session to have a conference with your negotiator. Certain actions taken in closed session require a public report. Generally, those are fairly limited. There's not a lot of action that's taken in closed session, but if there is action on occasion, the Brown Act requires a report of the action taken. The most common is settlement of litigation or finalization of real property transactional matters. There's a lot of nuance to whether or not a report needs to be taken based on whether or not the other party has signed the agreement, so I won't get into the details too much. But there are instances when a report of action does need to be made after, once you convene back in the open session. Next slide.
My question is, are Zoom members allowed to be asked some questions in progress?
We'll do, the plan was to do a public comment period at the end. So here's a listing of the primary closed session topics. I say primary because there are a few very discreet ones that are rarely, if ever, used, but these are the main ones. So conference with legal counsel regarding pending or anticipated litigation by or against a public entity. Liability claims can be discussed in closed session. Conference with real estate negotiators. Public employment issues, whether that's appointments, evaluation, or consideration of complaints. Those are all things that are properly and appropriately done in closed session. Conference with labor negotiators, and to discuss threats to public services or facilities. So those would be the closed session set, hopefully not the last one, but that you will see come up from time to time on your agendas. So that concludes kind of the basics of the Brown Act. Are there any other questions on the Brown Act before we move on? There's only a couple more slides. The California Public Records Act is very quick, and so, almost done.
Should I ask for public participation for this? Because that's item four, right? We're moving on now. There's, they're all.
We're all down to number seven now.
Yeah, the power points together. I figured we'd do one general public comment session at the end.
Okay.
But it's up to you. What do you think? Number six?
Is six on here?
The conduct of meetings. We talked about the conduct of meetings, but we're not going to get into detail on the parliamentary rules. I can, if there's questions about it, I can certainly address it. But I didn't prepare anything on the procedural rules because generally speaking, you know, we're talking about how to adopt amendments, how to adopt resolution, and how to act by motion, and those are generally discussed with the particular action that's coming before you. But if there's questions, I'm happy to address it.
See any? So I guess we can move on. So we're on item seven then, California Public Records Act Best Practices.
Correct.
And then after item seven, I'll open it up for public participation on any of these points. Okay.
So California Public Records Act is, is a statute in California that makes public records open to public inspection. And you'll see there, the PRA, as it's commonly referred to, was enacted in the '60s to safeguard the accountability of government to the public, promote maximum disclosure of the conduct of governmental operations, and explicitly acknowledged the principle that secrecy is antithetical to a democratic system of government of the people, by the people, and for the people. With narrow exceptions, all public records are open to inspection and disclosable upon request. Public record is broadly defined as any writing containing information relating to the conduct of the people's business, prepared, known, used, or retained by any state or local agency regardless of physical form or characteristics. It really includes everything, except for those things that are exempt from disclosure, and there's a long list, but the exemptions are narrowly construed. So if you go to the next slide, generally speaking, you're not going to be dealing with the Public Records Act. That's going to be a staff function. They're going to receive the requests, search for the documents, produce the documents. Sometimes they go under review by legal counsel to determine whether there's any redactions or exemptions that should be or can be exercised with respect to all or part of any record. But from your perspective, as members of the council, commissions, and boards, I think there's a number of things that you should be cognizant of. The first is not to use personal email accounts for official business. You don't want somebody like me calling through your Gmail account to find records that are disclosable under a request from the public. It's, it's, it's just generally not a good thing. So if you don't have an official city email address, creating a Gmail or app, whatever you may want, for use specifically to give out to constituents, to correspond about city business, of course not with each other, is advisable. Because if you use your personal email and you get a Public Records Act request, anything within your email that's about the city is, is a public record and potentially disclosable.
And that's if it's between you and a public, and a member of the public?
Could be. Could be.
Anybody.
Anybody. Could be between the city manager, you and a member of the public, you and the planning director, whomever, you and a board supervisor. If it's about the city and in your capacity as council member, it's a public record open to inspection.
Yeah, I actually had someone send something in my private email, and I asked him to repost it to my Gmail.
Correct.
And that's all I told him to do.
Yep.
And then I was able to do.
Yep. Yep. And so that's good practice. And so text messaging is another thing. Text messaging with constituents, with colleagues, with the city manager, these are all public records that are potentially disclosable. And so it's best to limit those types of communications to email with a separate email account. For all of your city business is conducted from one place, and it's not hard, difficult to come through and figure out what's personal versus what's official. And so the last thing on here is, because of all this, before sending an email, letter, text, remind yourself that email is likely subject to disclosure. And so it's always nice to be careful about what you say because all of your correspondence as officials of the city could be inspected by anybody upon request. And so just something to keep in mind as you're corresponding with folks in the community about the city.
Do all of our commissioners, Mandy, have Gmail accounts? I know this council does, but the planning commissioners?
They do not.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. Do you advise that they do?
For that reason, yeah. I mean, it could be an official city address, or it could just be a Gmail that you set up, you know, for your work as a member of the body. Either one's fine. But I would, if you're using personally, I think it's best to transition over to something other than that.
Would it, I've already, publication standards are, is the subject of this disclosure department, like a personal account?
No, you don't need to because it's, there's probably not personal stuff in there, but you'd still have to, you know, what's your day job versus what's, you know, relevant to the city? We'd still have to make that determination and search on, you know, if there was a public records request. But, you know, I'm more concerned about making sure that the line between the personal stuff and the official stuff is clearly defined. Because you do get a lot of emails, yeah?
Just, I think it's already been covered, but I've already been contacted by that for the public. All my personal emails about a topic that the commission's doing. And I guess going forward, if I don't want to set up another email, just it's better to talk in person with individuals.
Yep, there's nothing that obligates you to respond. So if you want to give them a call and say, hey, I have an email. But now, email to you is a public record, right? So if we've got a request, any emails from the public regarding, you know, your duties on the board, that would be something that would be disclosed. That's it. Yep. So just a couple of closing thoughts. I know that's a lot of information. I'm available if something comes up and you have a question. I'm always available for that reason. Generally speaking, members of the city council are not authorized to direct me to issue an opinion on legal matters with one exception. If it involves your participation, whether or not you can do something because of a potential conflict of interest, or whether or not something may be a Brown Act violation, you are authorized to contact me for that reason. If you need more of a legal opinion about, or you want me to draft an ordinance, that's something that needs either come through collective action of the city or through the city manager. But if it's about your own participation, whether, you know, you have a question as to whether or not what you're doing is compliant with the Brown Act, or with your financial disclosures or conflict of interest rules, you can always contact me directly for those reasons. And I will get everybody's emails and send you the PowerPoint and some other resources that I think are helpful. That you don't necessarily have to go through, but they are good resources if something comes up and you have a question. It's a quick reference guide that the League puts out that summarizes the information pretty well.
More information about what you've covered?
Correct. It goes into greater detail. So the League puts out a Brown Act guide, California Public Records Act guide. There's also some good materials from their new council member training courses that are available online. And I've collected those and will send them so that you have a quick reference. But you can also go to their website, and they have all their publications and resources there as well.
Any other questions from council? Okay, a little bit up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to make a statement or ask a question or comment on item four, five, six, or seven? You have one question on Zoom? Okay.
Hi, everybody. This is Julie Christie. Thanks for having me. I really appreciate it. And the presentation was very nice. I'm wondering if I can have a comment back to public comment? Is that applicable?
Oh, this was on a not, this was a non-agenda item that you wanted to discuss?
No, I'm sorry. I wanted to make a comment back into regards with public commenting.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay, I had a question. We, you guys were very clear about the public side of it, and I'm just questioning the rebuttal time that we consistently get during public comment. It's very rare that somebody gives a public comment and then it goes on to the next public commenter. There's usually a really long time that staff, council rebuttal back. Sometimes it's not relating back to what the person was really talking about. I think there should be clarification there. It takes up a lot of meeting time, so, thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Since it's a workshop format, I can just say, you know, generally, public comment should be a defined period, right? It should either come when the item is first presented or after a staff report. And it's, okay, we're now opening public comment. Everybody gets a chance, wants to speak once, then you close public comment, and then it comes back to the council for the confirmation, questions, discussion amongst the council. I think public comment should go speaker by speaker by speaker without any, you know, any discussion between the council during that comment section. It's best to keep it very segregated. Staff report, public comment, full discussion, call, vote. And the other thing is, you know, just because a motion, you know, if you do a staff report, public comment, council discussion, motion, you don't have to reopen it to public comment once a motion's been made. You've already had your public comment on a particular item, you don't reopen it just because a motion has been made. It's all part of the same agenda item, and so it's best to kind of keep them clearly defined and segregated.
Now, you have Matt Watts has a question. Okay, Matt, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, are all of the items just discussed, Brown Act and all that equally applied to commission, commissioner meetings, commissions, Brown Act and all that? Are these exactly the same?
They are. Any committee, commission, or council that's considered a legislative body is defined by the Brown Act, subject to the Brown Act in the same, to the same extent.
Were you asking me a question? I'm not getting to sound very well, and it's probably coming in and out.
He said, yes, they are subject to the same regulation under the Brown Act.
Great, thank you. That's it. Thank you very much. Great meeting.
Thank you, Matt. All right. Are there any other questions or comments from council as we move on to the next item? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Platts, appreciate it. Thank you to other members that are here, Black Commission, Arts and Heritage Commission, the Biden's Art Commission, Economic Development Commission, representatives of everyone, staff that's here, thank you for all coming. Reports of council.
May I just ask, Ryan, can you just address social media really quickly?
Oh.
Just so we're clear on what constitutes meetings and what's appropriate and not appropriate.
Yeah. Social media, as with most things, makes things a little bit more difficult. Council members, members of commission, they don't lose their ability to advocate, comment, engage in the public discussion just because they're members of a council or a commission. Still freely participate in those types of things. Brown Act concerns come in when there's a forum or a social media post by a council member and that other council members or commission members respond to that comment, right? If the mayor says, you know, creates a Facebook post saying, you know, there's going to be a meeting tonight for the city council, I hope everybody can come and attend. If two other council members say, yeah, come and attend, and I think we should all do this, then we're getting into a serial meeting. If members just comment generally and not respond to other members' comments, it's a gray area, but I think the argument would be that that's perfectly okay because you're commenting on matters of pertinence to the community. Again, that's one of those areas where it's best to exercise caution with respect to commenting on things that other council members have already commented on, whether it be, you know, a forum or the same social media post. It does open things up for Brown Act concerns, and it's best to just avoid those types of things. And so, you know, really, they need to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, but as a general matter, I just urge caution in commenting on things that other council members have either commented on or originated a post about.
Our last city council, we didn't have that problem because I think I was the only one that was on Facebook and the others weren't. But this council is very active on Facebook, and I know lately I've been really looking at Facebook posts, and if I see one of the council persons already sent something, I won't, I won't like it or love it or laugh at it or anything, you know, or comment. So, you know, it's almost like who gets there first is the council person that's going to be the one you're going to get, or if there's two.
Try and do the same thing.
I know.
It does create some problems, and I can promise it will be litigated. It will be. And it may be litigated in a small city, it may be litigated in a big city, but there are Brown Act advocates that will search for gray area so that they can litigate it and create law, one way or the other. And so again, I urge caution in posting things. Certainly, you know, Brown Act concerns aside, you want to be careful about what you post again because the first thing I mentioned, you are seen as speaking on behalf of the city. And whether it be members of the community or your employees, you want to be cognizant that there's going to be special weight that's given to those types of comments. And so if they're positive, fine. If they're critical, then, you know, it does send a message to your employees that as the perceived employer, you're being publicly critical of your employees. And, you know, that does create some risk, both to morale and from a legal exposure perspective. And those are the things you certainly, you know, are right, closed session discussion on specifics, but as a general practice, it's best to, you know, represent the city as a representative of the city and engage and be supportive and be a part of the process because, you know, ultimately, you are the city as the council. So where the city goes, so do you.
Was there something specific you wanted him to address?
I think that's it. I mean, there's been, I think we've all seen lately, social media has taken on a very negative tone against city employees, and there has been commentary by different members of the community that have caused some issues, I know amongst my staff and team, and some concerns about liability, workplace harassment issues. So I wanted to, you know, kind of clarify that so that we can, you know, if someone makes an educated decision to continue with that, then that's on them. It's because we're not understanding our roles and responsibilities that I wanted to address it here so that we're all clear going forward.
Emily?
Do these standards of behavior apply to other members of people's households as well? Like being a married partner perhaps?
I mean, the Brown Act, the Public Records Act, the statutory obligations apply to the member. Now, what the best practice is and what may be appropriate, you know, to the extent that the council member can persuade a member of their household not to comment on something because it wouldn't be becoming of the council member and his or her role as a council member, I think that's perfectly appropriate. But that would be something that would be up to the individual member to decide to do on their own.
I ask someone. So in recent days or weeks, the term slander has been used in relation to social media. And so I wonder if you can give us examples or definition of really what constitutes slander?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're starting to get beyond the agenda, especially with respect to this. If there's a particular concern, I encourage you to contact me and we can, we can agendize a closed session if there's something that we need to discuss. But that would really be something that I'd want to keep between myself and the council under, you know, the attorney-client privilege.
Okay, okay. Yeah, it's not a specific anything. It's just the, it's more the word more than anything, I think.
So, I mean, generally speaking, the word slander, defamation, those are defined in a body of case law that spans decades. And so to try to give a precise definition, it's really fact-intensive.
All right. Thank you again. We are on number eight, reports of council and staff. We'll start with Melissa. Did you fill any meetings or would you like to report this? So I just, um, the Blue Lake Economic Development Commission agenda, and there's a lot of really good things going on around here. Lots of upcoming events. Parks and Rec is quite busy. They're having great turnout, lots of skaters running out of skates. And there's Lager Park, Lager is going to be some anniversary party, and then a block party. It's going to be rock painting for Easter. And then there'll be another bingo at the Grange, which is a real good, so I'm looking forward to that. Let's see. We're talking about the sign as you come into Blue Lake, revamping the sign that's there because there's old stuff on it and the vinyl one is failing. So talking about that and working with the ad activity and the chamber to work on that. Let's see. Things are going well with the Bottawatt community moving forward to create a lot more jobs and spaces, commercial kitchen, different ideas are coming together for that area down there. And looking for volunteers for the Phil Nessler Car Show and leisure sports tournaments, which are some ideas of things that are going to be going on in July. which are some ideas of things that are going to be going on in July. And that's probably it. Not sure? Is that enough? Okay.
You can save some for the next meeting.
Well, I know. I didn't realize that was about, did I really have to say? Okay. If people are not prepared for this meeting before, I saw it on the agenda. I did see it too, and I was like, oh. Because I think I did go to another, did I already report on the reject? Probably not. Or no, I did, because I think it came today after.
It was two weeks ago.
Okay. Yeah, so that's it. Okay. As we do it. Elizabeth, did you attend any meetings with the last two?
I did. Do you want me to save it for next time or just?
No, you can do it now.
I went, the day after our last council meeting, I went to the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, and we talked a lot about facilities and rentals of facilities, setting prices, which I believe is an issue that's going to come for the council, setting prices for rentals and evaluating costs and benefits and whatnot, and having policies for rentals. And I've been to a very close Energy Authority meeting. We didn't talk about anything really exciting. That was mostly a closed session. And that's all.
Thank you. Angela?
I'm going to save it for the next meeting now. I have my notes with me.
Oh, okay. Chris, are you prepared tonight or?
I was on overtime last night when we had a meeting, so I missed that. So I won't be prepared either day.
Okay. So I attended, that's okay. I mean, it was on the agenda. I attended an HWMA meeting, which is Humble Ways Management Authority, and we authorize our executive director to execute a consent to assignment of agreement between HWMA and Mad River Harbors for green waste drop off and processing services to Steve Morris Logging Incorporated. There's no additional cost to it, and there'll be a minimal increase. And then we approved a resolution authorizing the executive director or designated to enter into a visual grant agreement with Cal Recycle for Organics Grant Program. And again, that's that SB 1383, which has to do with food waste. And I announced that we were having the Waste Day here, so that seemed pertinent. And then I have a Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting this Thursday, and I have the agenda here, looks like we're going to be working on. We're going to be discussing the completed pavement management program. And Burndale has a transportation development act they're going to be coming forward with. Trinidad has one. I'll see what Blue Lake does here. And there's a low-carbon transit operation program, we're going to be discussing that as well. And then I got this letter from FEMA concerning, and you probably got this at the city too, I don't know, but I think it was to you, it's concerning the national flood insurance program, providing clarification. So since we're having all this rant, I'm just worried about that. And I also received this from the Roundhouse, the Timber Heritage Association. They're presenting a Roundhouse rendezvous on Sunday, April 1st, if anyone's interested. And that's all I have. All right, we're on future, oh, a staff report. Are you going to wait till next meeting for your staff report? Regular meeting, thank you. And then future agenda items.
Let's do the primetime at emergency agenda item.
Emergency agenda item.
For this meeting? Yeah. It was something, because I didn't learn about when to add them until later on in the meeting.
So it's going to come before our two, two-week meeting, February 28th?
Yeah.
You're going to request something?
Would this be an emergency or just something that's urgent?
No, it's an emergency. Like, it affects, I want, even reading through what it says in your rules, it will affect the town and businesses and infrastructure of.
Yeah. I'm not sure what you're.
Well, okay, I'll just propose, I propose that we add to the agenda tonight some way to get sand and sandbags available to the public because of the amount of rainwater that we're getting and snow that is melting. If you've seen the videos of Blue Lake right now, tonight's supposed to be the worst, and it's not going to stop. It's going to get worse.
You can just, that can just be a staff-driven thing because we're already going through public works. We have sandbags and we have sand.
Okay, perfect.
Are those down at, are those down at the courtyard? Yeah, okay.
So how are you going to let the community know that those are there and when they're accessible?
We usually, usually the people in the areas that have traditional flooding know that we make those accessible. If we get some indication that we need additional, we make a public notice. We'll leave the courtyard open. The last time I stayed till, I don't need, you know, 18 hours in the middle of the night and help people fill sandbags, so it's, we just make ourselves available in that way.
Park was down there.
Can we talk about ways to communicate with the community about that other than people that have used it before might know that we're there? That seems like it might not reach everybody who needs sandbags if they're new to the community or don't know about it.
Well, I would suggest that we at least use the bigger Facebook group that has over 3,000 people following it to let people know that that's happening. I suppose all the other usual bulletin boards and whatnot might be appropriate.
So those would be available during our hours that we're open then?
Sandbags?
Yeah.
No, it does start to flood, it'll be there past hours too. Because, yeah, Mandy's done it before, I've done it years and years ago.
Yeah.
Sitting out there at 3 o'clock in the morning, people filling sandbags.
Where does it usually flood?
Usually along Hattery or at the horse arena.
Anything along Powers Creek, if any of the sublets get clogged. The railroad used to flood, but now that it's paved, it probably won't.
Railroad used to flood pretty bad, so I suspect that if that creek that emptied in the old Blue Lake area, if that's flooded, then we're going to be back up towards the cemetery too.
Well, if you'd like, as an agenda item, we can talk about, but this won't be until two weeks, as a future agenda item, how do we notice people when it concerns an emergency?
Yeah, I like that. Put that on the future agenda item, how to notify people.
And would it be appropriate to do it through something like Facebook?
Sure.
Yeah.
The scene, yeah. And disseminate by whatever means necessary.
Okay. We can have that discussion.
Is Blue Lake a part of the COAD, community agencies active or community organizations active in disaster? There might be a template or some planning if you reached out to COAD. They've been working in Rioville with the response to the earthquake and all the other things, but they might have some templates or some ideas.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other future agenda items? Okay, motion to adjourn. So moved. Second, motion by Elizabeth Kay, second by Julie Stifson. Adjourn and further discussion. Want some people to say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.